stewards not only of this world that you have created, but also of our relationships with one another. Help all of us gathered here this night to accept the challenging responsibilities of communal life, seeking always, even in the most mundane tasks, to serve not only you, but also your precious children of all ages and races and classes and creeds, whom you have given to us as neighbors and fellow citizens. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We don't have any presentations tonight, so we will go right into the public hearings. Page five, item E1 is a request to adopt an ordinance granting conditional use permit number CU 2019-0007 to Charles E. Falk and Catherine L. Falk for the operation of an automobile body and paint shop at 11602 and 11604 Jefferson Avenue and Zone C2 of General Commercial. The proposed automobile body and paint shop will be newly constructed on a site that has had automotive uses since being developed. The new building and site will meet all current city codes and greatly enhance the visual appearance of the property. The request is consistent with the One City, One Future Comprehensive Plan 240 land use map. And on October the 2nd of this year, the City Planning Commission voted unanimously nine to zero to recommend approval of the request. The city manager also recommends approval. Are there any cards? Sam Baraki? Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Sam Baraki. I'm with Site Improvement Associate. I'm the agent for the applicant. I'm here on behalf of my client, respectfully requesting that you follow the recommendation of Planning Commission and staff and approving the conditional use permit before you tonight. And I will stand by to answer any question you may have.
Thank you, sir. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Moved in second. Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Scott for Vice Mayor Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Councilwoman Cherry.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Councilman Jenkins.
Four.
Mayor Price.
Four.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved, second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Scott.
Four.
Vice Mayor Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Councilwoman Cherry.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Councilman Jenkins.
Four.
Mayor Price.
Four.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Page 39, item E2 is a request to approve a resolution authorizing plan amendment 2019-0005, the Denby-Wark area plan, as an amendment to One City, One Future Comprehensive Plan 2040 for the city of Newport News, Virginia. The Denby-Wark area plan provides a detailed study of the opportunity area as identified and recommended in the comprehensive plan. The plan's boundaries are the CSX Railroad to the east, Wark River to the west, Orchard Point Road, Deep Creek to the south, and Oakland Industrial Park to the north. The plan identifies a vision for the area, identifies challenges, makes recommendations, and will serve as a guide for redevelopment within the Denby area. On October the 2nd of this year, the Planning Commission voted seven-one and one abstention to recommend adoption of the Denby-Wark area plan to City Council. The city manager recommends approval. Are there any cards?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Scott.
Four.
Vice Mayor Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Councilwoman Cherry.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Councilman Jenkins.
Four.
Mayor Price.
Four.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
Yes, I did want to. I noticed in looking through, there are a number of options. And what I wanted to know is, we approved this plan, but there will be, I'm hoping, a lot of input about the options that are given, like in one area, four different options. So this is only a guide. It's not saying that everything in there is going to be done. I just want the citizens to know that.
Yes, ma'am. It's a plan. And there absolutely will be additional input from the public as we move through the process and try to bring this plan to fruition.
Okay. Thank you.
I do have something. I just want to thank the entire staff of Sheila, you and the planning department for, you know, digging even deeper than what we normally do, even with the joint meeting with the city council as well as the planning commission, to really, you know, practice what we want to have in our city, look at us as a whole unit. And I think this, adding this piece and the tour, so that we can really see what we need to improve on and the things that are working well. So thank you for, and a job well done.
Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Scott.
Four.
Vice Mayor Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Councilwoman Cherry.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Councilman Jenkins.
Four.
Mayor Price.
Four.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Item F contains the following items: minutes of the special joint meeting of the Newport News Public Schools and City Council on September the 10th, minutes of the work session of September 24th, minutes of the special meeting of September 24th, minutes of the regular meeting of that same day. Do any of these items need to be removed by council? If not, a motion to approve is in order.
So moved.
There's one more to add to that, I'm sorry. Yeah, a request to approve a resolution expressing approval of the Hampton Newport News Community Services Board state fiscal year 2020 budget and fiscal years 2019 and '20 performance contract renewal revisions. If it's a motion to approve those items and that all-inclusive, F1 and F5 is in order.
So moved, second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Scott.
Four.
Vice Mayor Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Councilwoman Cherry.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Councilman Jenkins.
Four.
Mayor Price.
Four.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Item G1, Madam Manager.
The first item is a request to approve a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a project administration agreement bind between the city of Newport News and the Virginia Department of Transportation for J. Clyde Moore's Boulevard paving, Wark Boulevard to CSX and J. Clyde Moore's Boulevard paving, CSX to Jefferson Avenue, and I recommend approval.
Are there any cards?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Scott.
Four.
Vice Mayor Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Councilwoman Cherry.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Councilman Jenkins.
Four.
Mayor Price.
Four.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Page 248, item G2, Madam Manager.
This is a request to approve a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a project administration agreement bind between the city of Newport News and the Virginia Department of Transportation for citywide flashing yellow arrow upgrades, and I recommend approval.
Are there any cards?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved, second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
I just have one question, Mr. Mayor. Because this is the flashing yellow lights, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so when we redid the bridge right there on Wark Boulevard, and they have flashing lights now, is this the same type of, is this talking about the same thing? Because you have to push to cross the street now from Wark to get, like, if I'm going from that side to the other side, is this the same flashing type of lights?
We have the Director of Engineering here, but my understanding, and I don't know in terms of the actual type of the signal, but my understanding is it's changing over so that you can flash instead of having red at the intersections. It'll be a flashing yellow to allow people to move forward. And I may be going beyond my expertise on engineering here.
The city manager's engineering is exquisitely sound. This is for the flashing yellow turn lane signals that allow you to turn left instead of waiting for a red at specific intersections that we do citywide. And this is the expansion of that program.
Okay. All right, so while I have him here, and the flashing light that's at Wark, people don't stop when that light comes on. If you're trying to cross the street, you all made the walkway from...
Yes, I know exactly what you're talking about.
But they don't stop. I mean, they keep going. It's like, okay, so you push the light and you wait, but they keep right on going. We experienced that Saturday.
Is this the pedestrian crossing?
That pedestrian crossing. They don't, they don't stop. They keep on going. And so I don't know what we can do about that, because that's a new, that's new at that intersection. And I don't know if there's signs to tell people watch for pedestrians or what, but they do not stop even when that light is flashing yellow.
We'll take a look at the signage and the other approach markings, and we'll also discuss that with the police chief.
Okay. Oh, he was part of the walk, but it's okay.
Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Scott.
Four.
Vice Mayor Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Councilwoman Cherry.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Councilman Jenkins.
Four.
Mayor Price.
Four.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Page 259, item G3, Madam Manager.
This is a request to approve a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a project administration agreement bind between the city of Newport News and the Virginia Department of Transportation for Jefferson Avenue and Pavilion Place traffic signal, and I recommend approval.
Are there any cards?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved. So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
I have another question.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that for Mr. Engineer?
Wait, I did so well with the last one.
I'm sorry, Madam Manager. I do apologize, Ms. Madam Manager Engineer now. Okay.
That's a legal question.
And I know sometimes we have things on the books to improve, and so I'm thankful that we competed and successfully secured the funds. But I'd like to know what prompted this, because now you're talking about adding another light on Jefferson, if I'm understanding this correctly. Or is it coming from Pilot House down?
Yeah, that's exactly another light. In my understanding, and I'll defer to the engineer on it, but there have been some issues with pedestrian crossings there. And I think it's trying to direct some of the pedestrians to a particular intersection rather than crossing in the middle. I know there's been some accidents and some concerns about safety there, but I'll turn it over to the engineer for the engineering aspect of it.
I appreciate that, Madam Manager.
I can just tell you from what I've heard.
I appreciate you. Thank you.
Let me make sure that we're talking the right intersection. Hang on.
It's nearby Pilot House. There's not currently an intersection.
It's not, yeah, it's not, from what the project showed, it's not an intersection, I mean, it's not a light there now, which means...
Pilot and Jefferson?
Pilot and Jefferson there is, but it's...
No, I'm saying where the project is. So going to Pilot House, you would have one more light to stop at.
Yes.
I hope you're aware of that.
Whatever's safe for the citizens.
All right, I'm sorry. Ask the question one more time for me, please.
Okay, so I was asking, what prompted that? Because this is, it looks like it's an added light that we're adding on to Jefferson, and that's right there, almost a little bit up from Casey Chevrolet, it looks like.
Yes, and there's some apartments back there.
Some apartments over there.
And there, there's a lot of pedestrian crossing there to get back and forth, and there's been some concern.
And that was the driver. It was, it was the combination of the level of pedestrian traffic at that intersection.
Going across to the apartments?
Going across, and if I recall correctly, there's a social security office adjacent to...
Across the street.
There are apartments across the other street.
And then there's a long-term hotel across the street also.
Yes.
Those are the people that really have a problem crossing.
And so with that being said, are we looking at other intersections in the city that may have the same type of complex that where it will need, you know, an additional arm? Because I know it's kind of costly, and it takes a lot.
Yes, ma'am. There's actually several different kinds of programs that we look at these types of issues.
Yes.
Ongoing.
Yes.
Throughout the city, we're continually measuring speeds. We're looking at accident histories. We're looking at requests from citizens, businesses, everything else. And we are continuously evaluating which of those intersections may need to be upgraded. And similar type thing that we do with those flashing yellow lights, we intend to move towards them throughout the city. We're prioritizing them on the basis of where we believe the greatest benefit would be.
Okay.
This one happened to rise to the level of something that needed to be done sooner rather than later.
And was that based on accidents? Or was that based on what data did we get in order to make the decision about this one first?
We do look at accidents, pedestrian counts, speeds in the area. There's actually nine different specific details. I'll be happy to go through that separately.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Manager. Thank you, ma'am.
I have one other question, back to the flashing lights. Was that not based on a recommendation from a citizen to start those? Or is my information incorrect?
I'm sure there was a similar, there were requests. There's frequently, and I'm sure we've all experienced this, you pull up to a red light, there's nobody coming. It feels like you're sitting there for forever for no good reason. And VDOTs perhaps seven years ago adopted a federal standard that allowed us to move to those lights in many cases. So we've done about 25% or so of the city so far, and we're continuing that program, especially when we can get additional funding through grants.
But you're absolutely correct. It did generate initially from a citizen.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Scott.
Four.
Vice Mayor Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Councilwoman Cherry.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Councilman Jenkins.
Four.
Mayor Price.
Four.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Page 270, item G4, Madam Man.
This is a request to approve a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a project administration agreement bind between the city of Newport News and the Virginia Department of Transportation for Rock Landing Drive and Omni Boulevard traffic signals, and I recommend approval.
Are there any cards?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved, second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Scott.
Four.
Vice Mayor Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Councilwoman Cherry.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Councilman Jenkins.
Four.
Mayor Price.
Four.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Item G5, Madam Manager.
This is a request to approve a resolution authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a lease addendum number five bind between the city of Newport News and the Economic Development Authority for the Department of Human Services space in Rouse Tower, and authorizing the city manager to execute any documents necessary to effectuate the transaction, and I recommend approval.
Are there any cards?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Scott.
Four.
Vice Mayor Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Councilwoman Cherry.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Councilman Jenkins.
Four.
Mayor Price.
Four.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Page 293, item G6, Madam Manager.
This is a request to approve a resolution authorizing and directing the city manager to execute lease agreement amendment number three bind between the city of Newport News and the Hampton Road Sanitation District for the lackey interceptor force main, Part One, to attest payments have been satisfied, and I recommend approval.
Are there any cards?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved. Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Scott.
Four.
Vice Mayor Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Councilwoman Cherry.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Councilman Jenkins.
Four.
Mayor Price.
Four.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Page 301, item G7, Madam Manager.
Yes, this is a request for City Council to designate by motion the city's voting and alternate voting delegates for the National League of Cities Annual Business Meeting being held on November 23rd, 2019. And I'll defer to council.
I would like to be representative as the delegate. It's fine. You want to be the delegate?
Could I be an alternate?
Sure.
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 Okay.
Could I get a motion? It means you're there till the cows come home.
I move that Vice Mayor Vick be the delegate, the voting delegate for the city, and David Jenkins, Councilman Jenkins, be the alternate delegate.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Scott.
Four.
Vice Mayor Vick.
Four.
Yes.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Councilwoman Cherry.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Councilman Jenkins.
Four.
Mayor Price.
Four.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Item H, Madam Manager.
Yes, we have about eight appropriations. The first is a request to approve a resolution appropriating $500,000 for southeast community redevelopment initiatives. The second one is a request to approve a resolution appropriating $541,660 for planning, design services, and construction costs for proposed renovations to facility space occupied by the Department of Human Services. The third one is a request to approve a resolution appropriating $1.8 million from the FY 2020 bond authorization in the equipment category for upgrades of the 911 computer-assisted dispatch system and the police records management system and the sheriff's jail management system. Number four is a request to approve a resolution appropriating $2,603,300 from the FY 2020 bond authorization for select improvements to parks and recreation areas. Number five is a request to approve a resolution appropriating $3,104,000 from the FY 2020 bond authorization public buildings category. Number six is a request to approve a resolution appropriating $8,039,000 from the 2020 bond authorization sewer rehabilitation category for the citywide sanitary sewer rehabilitation program. And number seven is a request to approve a resolution appropriating $10 million from the general obligation bond fund to Newport News Public Schools for HVAC replacements at Woodside High School and Deer Park Elementary School. And the last is a request to approve a resolution appropriating $13,782,508 from the FY 2020 capital improvements plan streets and bridges category for transportation projects, and I recommend approval of all eight resolutions.
Is there a motion to approve item H1 through H8, all inclusive?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
Yes, I have a question. Is the first one, the $500,000 for southeast community, is that from the grant, or is that separate from...
No, this is separate of the CIP to support the city's contribution, the city's share. No, it's, it's for the general community, but it's not as part of the CNI grant.
Not the CNI, thank you.
This is additional support.
I also had a question, Mr. Mayor, and I don't see Mr. Poplowski here, but...
I believe the Assistant Director is here, though, if you have anything that I can't answer beyond engineering.
I appreciate you. Changing hats. For the list of the appropriations for Parks and Recs, I see that they have replacement of lights for a couple of locations. And I know that citizens have brought to our attention regarding the lights at Doris Miller, and they're not part of this, these appropriations. So if you can give us, if you would, please, can give us an update on what's happening with the lighting at Doris Miller, because I know that that was a big concern for some of the leagues that were practicing there.
Of course. Dr. Cherry, I can answer that question in brief. My colleague, who I enjoy working closely alongside, Ms. Tammy Jordan, the assistant director of Recreation, heading up this project with the guidance of the director, Mr. Michael Poplowski. The items that are being funded through this request tonight are those that are either pose a significant safety hazard or will in the near future. Item one on the list, removal of some holes in lighting, some fields that are no longer being used. And items two and three are those fields where the lighting seems likely to fail in the near future, cannot be replaced easily, and would cause a significant disruption in our ability to serve the public. It does not in any way compile the entire project. These are the projects that we're moving forward with, that we have confidence to move forward with at this time, but there are a number of other. The entire study was a five million dollar study throughout the city to improve lighting, and I know Ms. Jordan is looking at Doris Miller. It's not part of the request tonight, but I know she's given it her consideration, as is Mr. Poplowski, for the near future.
Okay, because I see that they're talking about the pool and doing some replacement of the pool cover at Doris Miller, and so, and I think if I'm not mistaken, that they did remove the old poles because they were not, they were a safety issue. And so I just wanted to know, somewhere in the planning, there will be lighting replaced also for Doris Miller is my hope. Am I incorrect in that?
We can give you more detailed information in terms of the scheduling, but he's absolutely right. There was a study done a few years ago that identified priority projects primarily based on public safety, as was mentioned. But we did, in this CIP, if you recall, include additional funding for lighting across the city to be able to, because as he said, it is a five million dollar study. We did not have those kinds of resources, but we did include additional money, and we will be trying to target the most needed projects to give additional use for the citizens in those areas of those facilities.
So for those who are not able to use Doris Miller because of the lighting issue, we are able to accommodate them at other sites? Is that what we're doing?
And that I can't answer, I'll defer, but I'd have to give you more to get a report back to you on the timing for lights as well as the usage.
I don't want to speak for Ms. Jordan directly to that, but I know that there doesn't seem to be a concern for broadcast other areas that are being underserved. As I understand it, everything is being accommodated at this time, but the lighting that's being prioritized will ensure that there's no disruption in service in the short term, and they'll continue to look forward at those other locations.
Okay. I just want to stay on that to see if we're going to do something, if that lighting is a part of that process. Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
We'll get to a report of more detailed information.
Thank you.
Call the row, please.
Councilwoman Scott.
Four.
Vice Mayor Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Councilwoman Cherry.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Councilman Jenkins.
Four.
Mayor Price.
Four.
Motion carried, seven zero.
We are now at Citizens' Comments on Matters that Are Demanded to the Business of the Council. I will call you as the cards were presented. Dr. Robin Valentine.
Ventah.
Valentine. Ventah, I'm sorry.
Hi, Mayor Price. It's okay. Good to see everyone, esteemed City Council members, Madam City Manager. Good to be here again. Happy fall. Good time to be in our parks and our green spaces and enjoying looking at the water from, especially from our new city farm portion of Riverview Farm Park. Want to thank all of you for approving the CIP line item for the city farm property of three hundred thousand dollars and urge you to continue that line item in subsequent years so that we can start making this park available to our citizens who are eager to be on the land. Also want to thank the city manager for this coming Saturday, opening up the park to two sessions of touring by park officials and archaeological expert. There's one at nine, I believe, and one at eleven. And you have to call eight-eight-eight-three-three-three-three to make an appointment. I urge the citizens to do that and see this beautiful new land that we hopefully will be soon able to enjoy. We also would love to see work on the trail that has been proposed, well, for many decades, that would go by the water there, by the beautiful James River and the Deep Creek, so that the people can enjoy that. Thank you once again. We also would love to see some sort of a citizens advisory committee, perhaps led by Mike Poplowski and Parks and Rec, to help with designing, making decisions, finding out what the public wants on our new parkland. And I know any of us in Citizens for Riverview Farm Park would be glad to help in any way to make our dreams come true for that waterfront green space. I'm also here tonight to support Virginia Organizing and the bus concerns, especially for the transit dependent in Newport News. I have heard tales that there are people who have lost their jobs because buses have not run when they're supposed to, and they got no notice of it. It's a serious issue. The transportation, public transportation in this city is not what it should be for what we're paying. So I urge you to think about that and what can we do to improve transit for the transit dependent in Newport News. Thank you for your time, and thank you for all the work you do.
Antonio Thompson.
Thank you very much. It's good to see you, everyone. In the name of Jesus Christ, First Thessalonians, Chapter four, verse sixteen. For the Lord himself shall descend from heaven with a shout, with the voice of the archangel, Antonio Venture Thompson, and with the Trump of God, Donald Trump. And the dead in Christ shall rise first; then we which are alive and remain shall be caught up together with them in the clouds, Air Force One, to meet the Lord in the air. So shall we be with the Lord. Wherefore comfort ye one another with these words. Trump, twenty twenty. Around this time, twenty fifteen, I was celebrating and campaigning, Trump, twenty sixteen. Thank you, Lord, in the name of Jesus Christ, that it has come to pass. And now here it is, twenty nineteen. Thank you, Lord. Trump, twenty twenty. First Corinthians, Chapter fifteen, verse fifty-two. In a moment, in an instant, in the twinkling of an eye, the last Trump. This is the last term for the last Trump. Trump, twenty twenty. The Trump shall sound, and the dead shall be raised. Sleeping dead are cousins. The Muslims say, the Muslims call sleeping and dead one and the same. And the dead shall rise incorruptible, no impeachments, and we shall be changed. So everyone that say they not gonna vote for Donald Trump, within a twinkling of an eye, within an instant, you gonna stand in that voting booth and you gonna vote. Trump, twenty twenty. In the name of Jesus Christ, hallelujah, amen. Corporation of News, I love it.
Shawna Lawson.
Amen, that's right.
Good evening, how you doing, Councilwoman, Mayor Price, and Councilmen, men and women? My name is Shawna Lawson, and I am with Virginia Organizing. And we at Virginia Organizing, we are statewide grassroots organization that address issues that affect our community in a negative way. And I'm here today to reiterate the list of demands that we sent to all the councilmen and women individually. And those demands is, one, bus routes need to connect to Jefferson Avenue and Warwick Boulevard, on Demby Boulevard, Oyster Point Road, Main Street, and Harpersville Road.
Can you move the mic down a little bit? Thank you.
Better, okay. An expansion of service hours, especially during the weekends and holidays where transit services are available through one AM. Increased retention of bus operations operated so that promised services are actually fulfilled. And an improvement system for monitoring what buses are in their routes that is streamlined and accessible for all consumers to view. The reduction of missed and delayed trips, and all bus routes to run at least every thirty minutes. Now, we understand HRT is proposing a regional funding system, and we are curious as to how this is going to affect the city's services. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Albert Williams.
Good evening, Honorable Members of the Newport News City Council. I'm Albert Williams. I'm with the Virginia Organizers as well, and I'm here to ask that the members of the City Council of Newport News somehow intervene with the public transportation problem. I personally rely on the HRT to go to and from my college, Thomas Nelson, every day of the week. And when I take those routes of the HRT, one oh eight and one eleven, if and sometime that I miss one of those routes, I'm like, one day from losing a class or something like that. So what I'm requesting is that somehow, some way, that the HRT be held accountable for those interruptions with the services when those buses should arrive at a certain time, and somehow be a relay, a relay system be placed in order so that if those people who are standing out waiting on the bus to come, and they don't have another avenue to get to the destination that they're waiting for, why not someone from HRT have some messenger to come out and say, well, it's going to be another hour before that next bus comes, so you need to make arrangement. And also, Virginia Organizer has suggested before the City Council some things that could help solve this problem. As a member before me has said, if you were to implement a thirty-minute route for each bus, that would help solve this problem. And also, if I spoke about the relaying, there has to be communication on each bus. So why not inform those people who are out there waiting for a bus to say, it's not coming within that certain amount of time? And that would give them a chance to get an opportunity to try and get to their destination within that set period of time that needed to be there. And the very last thing, I'm asking that each member take in consideration the things that I've said, even though I may have rambled through it, but I'm sincere within my heart, trying to get somehow for the people here in Newport News to get that public transportation that's needed to get them to and from the places that they need to be. And I pray that each of you would consider what I've said, even though I rambled through it.
Thank you, sir. Roya, can I see the spelling of this last name? Ten thirty-seven, Twenty-third Street? I'm sorry, I couldn't...
Hi. I'm Roy Garcia. Well, I live in Newport News downtown in the area. I'm just here to talk about, well, in the community, we don't have nothing to do. Like, it's too much gun violence. And people, it's just like, everything closed, we got our school, everything's closed, it's just nothing to do. And y'all, y'all funding everything else, but y'all not funding things that's helping us. Like, we are a community too, we live downtown too, we matter too, we're people too, and stuff like that. But I'm out of breath, so I gotta sit back down.
If I'm saying that correctly. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Price and City Council. My name is China Hodges, and I'm a Newport News resident. I am twenty-one years old, I attend Thomas Nelson, and I am employed. In two thousand and fifteen, my brother was killed due to senseless gun violence. He was eighteen years old. During that time, I was lost, and I didn't know that his death affected me. I was acting out in school and being disrespectful. I didn't know, I was just angry, I was upset, hurt, didn't know who or where to reach out to. I'm speaking out today to you all because I feel more funding, support, and resources must be poured into our grassroots groups that are working with our children, children and kids in the community every day, that go door to door, that's taking the money out of their pockets, you know, working with these kids. I feel like that we should support the people that are doing the work, like Us for Us, Empower All, and Abue Unity. These organizations work with us, for us, for children who are overlooked by guidance counselors, teachers, the community is needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Clarissa Jones. Good evening.
Hello. Hi, I'm Clarissa, and I'm just, I'm from Newport News, and I'm a single mother of two teenage boys, one of whom was shot on two separate occasions. And one of those occasions, he was supposed to be at basketball practice, which really didn't interest him. He's not interested in, you know, like, being at the, at the teen centers and community centers that they have because the age differences, they allow younger kids with the, with the teenage kids, and, you know, some teens don't sit well with that. I'm here today to ask for funding for the Us for Us that helps with teenage people that's in our community that's, you know, like, kinda in the streets. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Donovan Wright. Good evening.
I'm Donovan Wright. I'm a resident as well as a business owner here in Newport News. Wanted to bring to your attention that we do need funding for grassroots organizations. And I noticed that you all do care about traffic. What I'm concerned about is a different type of traffic that we deal with every day, and that's our children going from the hood to prison. The traffic between guns coming from nowhere to their hands, the traffic between the bodies falling in the streets and ending up in the hospitals. I just curious to know, when are we gonna put up a stop sign, excuse me, a stop sign between those type of activities? Just imagine, you know, a child coming down Warwick Boulevard, you know, with a gun, frustrated, angry, and just anxious to pull the trigger, and another child that's coming down Oyster Point, as we already mentioned, walking down because they got suspended from school. These two children meet each other in a different type of accident that take place, same street that we already talked about, but there's no signs, no programs put in place that's created to help them before they get to that intersection. Grassroots organizations such as ourselves, us, popularly known as Good Dad Gang, work with our teens. They tell us what they need. We develop the programs, and these programs help them from going to prison, dropping out to school, killing each other, or feeling like they can't talk to their parents. We always doing funding for the companies that's been around for a long time, but these programs don't work. They come out of textbooks from God knows where, and we print them off, and we give them to an instructor, and they teach them in a class where the kids aren't, don't even exist. We need programs that's gonna be effective in the community, because if we do not do such a thing, it's gonna come a time where it's not two children. It may be a law enforcement agency that's just trying to go home, do his job to go home, that come across a kid that have all this anger built up, and they have a confrontation that we see every day on the news. And then as a result of it, you have a whole bunch of senselessness happen, taking place, such as rioting and stuff. Yeah, it haven't happened here, or it may have happened a long time ago, but my thing is, what are we gonna do about funding programs that can prevent it? Develop the traffic signs that can control things. Sorry, I'm sorry.
Captain Patrick Wright.
Evening. My name is Patrick Wright. My address is nine-four-two Shore Drive, Mayor Price and members of the City Council. I would like to, along with other members of the Citizens for Riverview Farm Park, thank you for including in the city's capital improvement plan for fiscal year two thousand and twenty, funding to the sum of three hundred thousand dollars for the city farm park. I'd also like to thank the City Council and other functionaries of our city's government for the interest and assistance they have extended to my colleagues at Virginia Organizing in our efforts to improve bus service in our city and region. In successful capital, in successive capital improvement plans, including the current one, our city has a stated goal of the cultivation and promotion of a positive image of the city, particularly among the millennial workforce. Millennials, when polled about issues that mattered the most to them, invariably put the environment at the top of that list. They are the green generation. To our city credit, we have had since the late nineteen eighties an increasingly robust recycling effort. Still, we need to do more, particularly if we want to get the attention of millennials. I would like to challenge the City Council and all of our citizens to commit to banning single-use plastics, grocery bags, foam cups, straws, et cetera, in our city. All of these items litter our city streets, parks, and waterways, bog our storm drains, and fill up our landfills. There are environmentally friendly substitutes for all of these items. The non-biodegradable residue from these materials and products will be in the environment for millennia. The microplastic generated from this material in the waterways threatens one of our oldest industries, one that defines our region, the seafood industry. These efforts should be coupled with a public education campaign focusing on reducing litter of all kinds and proper enforcement. No one, no matter what their age or generation, wants to live in a trashy city. The reality is that we will have to adopt these futures regardless in the future, and we should. Better to be proactive and show leadership and claim the mantle of a green city. I'd also like to see the leadership of our city coupled with active backing of our citizens encourage our state government to follow the lead of ten other states and pass a container deposit law or bottle bill. Currently, the overall beverage container recycling rate in the U.S. is thirty-three percent. In states with a bottle bill, the rate is seventy percent. An axiom of the modern environmental movement is think globally, act locally. We have the chance with these measures and more to improve the environment and quality of life for all our cities, residents, including the millennials. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Lucy Van Time. Lucy Van Time. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Price and City Council. Tonight, I'm here to highlight three points. First, I'd like to thank the Council again for creating a line item in the CIP for the city farm portion of Riverview Farm Park and for designating three hundred thousand dollars in that line item for fiscal year two thousand and twenty, to make a start in getting city farm ready for the public to enjoy. Second, I'd like to thank City Council for opening city farm up for free public tours this Saturday, October twenty-sixth, at nine AM and at eleven AM. The telephone number to call for the reservation is eight-eight-eight-three-three-three-three. Newport News citizens will certainly enjoy getting a glimpse of their fabulous riverfront land and looking out on the gorgeous James and Warwick Rivers and beautiful Deep Creek this Saturday. Third and last, many of us have come here tonight to call attention to problems with our Hampton Roads Transportation City Bus Service. I would also like to see Riverview Farm Park and Grissom Library added to the bus routes of our city. All of our city's parks, especially our beautiful riverfront parks, and all of our libraries should be accessible to all of our citizens. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Adrian Cook, seven fifty, Twentieth Street. I'm speaking today on behalf of United Soldiers for United Streets. September nineteenth marked the year that I came home and was released from federal prison from doing over a decade for selling drugs in this community right here. And it was there that I realized that I never imagined making it to the age of eighteen. Now, I stand before you at thirty-nine, and the reason being is because I spent most of that time in federal prison. And when I came home, I realized that the youth is in the same situation that I was in. Most of them, some of them are not making it to the age of eighteen. While I was there, a counselor told me that the median prison that they was building over across the street wasn't for me, they had a bed for me, that was for my kids if I didn't change the way that I operated. It was then that I committed myself that if I could put my life on the line to destroy my community, then I could put my life on the line to build my community.
then I could put my life on the line to build my community up. Now I stand before you today not asking you to risk your life with me. I'll do that. But for you to help me build my community by allocating resources, funds to the programs that grassroots organizations like Us For Us and Abu Unity and Empower All who are out there every day with the youth, talking to them, putting our arms around them, letting them know that they are loved. I'm asking y'all to consider giving us resources and helping us to give these kids hope, to give these kids love, to teach them financial literacy, to let them know the opportunity is now here. Opportunity is everywhere. It's sad that our youth is graduating and before they get to go to college, they're dead. Something has to be done. We've talked about it. This stuff was going on when I was a kid. I'm 39 years old. It's time for action. Us For Us, we out here doing it. We walk in the pavements. We talking to the kids. They telling us what they want. We've built programs. We asking y'all that y'all allocate some of these funds to these programs. And you can hold us accountable. But something has to be done. Thank you for your consideration.
David Wilson.
Good evening. Good evening, good evening. I'd like to acknowledge the Councilman David Jenkins and Marcelo Sturt. My name is David Wilson. I'm the resident of Newport News. I'm the founder of organization called Good Dad Gang and now I'm one-fourth of an organization called Us For Us. I served 19 years in prison, state prison. Out of the 19 years, 10 of those years were spent in solitary confinement at Red Iron State Prison. I didn't even see sunlight. But I know I put myself in that situation so I was willing to buckle down and do what I had to do because I had destroyed my community. Like my brother Adrian just said, you know, in there you realize a lot of things. That once you destroy a community, you leave it destroyed for those that come behind you. And that's what I felt like I did. So I dedicated myself to trying to come home and change that. I've never been to a City Council meeting before in my life. This is my first time. So I'm listening, you know, very attentively to, you know, everything that you guys say and paying attention to, you know, this little piece of paper right here, you know, because that's what was passed to me. But I just saw a lot happen, you know, with the saying of a word, "For, for, for." You know, it's that saying, $1.8 million just went that way. "For." $13 million just went that way. I was like, wow. You know? I spend a lot of my time in the streets where our children are dying. A lot of times my car is on E. Right now, my brakes just stopped and went out. So I caught the bus to the, one of those places y'all just allocated some of that money to. Caught the bus to Marshall Courts. And spent a lot of time out there. And I just watched as a man just stood before you guys and told y'all that the lights didn't work in front of Doris Miller. And his words were, "It's not a safety hazard." I'm from Marshall Courts. Doris Miller is on 800 block. So while he's saying it's not a hazard, a safety hazard, I know a lot of kids that are dying right there because it's a lot of dark areas right now. Every day. I can name a 12-year-old girl that was killed. I know a 17-year-old boy that was killed. Not because they were numbers that landed on somebody's desk, but because I spend a lot of time with them personally in that dark space where the lights are out that just got $1.8 million or whatever to, you know, fix something else other than those lights. And it made me sad that such an easy word, "for", still no lights, still no funding for my organization that's spending a lot of work in that community trying to help these kids. The problem is not, oh, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Malik Jones.
Good evening, Mayor Price, Vice Mayor Fay, Councilmen and Women. My name is Malik Jones and I am a resident of the Newport News. I come before you today to speak on how bidding, a personal relationship with the youth could bring a massive change in the community. Many young men and women my age would usually come forth blaming you guys and really not dare not knowing that we ought to blame ourselves. We fail to realize to listen to one another. As you fail to listen to our leadership, being that we feel though what is on our mind can get us to a better life or not only that, but what's going on around us, what's in our community. Our leadership fails to listen to our youth by letting their work or job get the best of them. So it cancels out the voice of our youth. With that being said, I feel as though our leadership needs to start off first by building a personal relationship with our youth and not letting their work or job get the best of them. Instead incorporate what us young men and women are saying into their work and watch how the youth begin to make a major change. Thank you.
Janie Basemore.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council and Madam City Manager. My name is Janie Basemore and I'm a resident of the city. And I just want to say to you all to just stop and take time to look at what has happened to our southeast community. These young people are suffering from lack of revitalization and programs. Huntington was a place for our youth in the past. We thank you for including Huntington in the CIP. But we need to speed up the funding for Huntington. Funding for the plan and design of Huntington needs to be appropriated now. Should we continue to delay the funding, more and more of our schools are gonna need repair and rebuilding. They will need more than roofs and HVAC systems. We're already hearing that Warwick needs rebuilding. So the question becomes, will Warwick take priority over Huntington because it's closed? And if we don't act now? Many of our schools are 50 years plus old. No other school project should take funding over Huntington, which was neglected for years. Some of which had to do with completely closing the school and erecting some alternative site with no school and giving it a Huntington name. Still unacceptable. I believe and ask you to keep in mind that for every day that Huntington is closed, this city and the school board is in violation of the court ordered busing plan. And it's still in effect. I remind you that the plan provided for neighborhood schools for middle school students in Newport News. We have not pursued any action on that plan because it was just gonna hold up progress. But progress is being held up anyway. So the question is, why not pursue it? In June 2020, Huntington becomes school on paper. No students. I hope that makes all of you feel just like we feel, that the community was failed, that the children were failed. Between the city and the school board, past and present, the demise of Huntington should never have happened. And the only way for you to reconcile with this community is for immediate reopening of Huntington. Therefore, we ask you to speed up the funding for Huntington Middle School so that we can get on with educating our students and having our students in downtown area. As always, Huntington shall rise again and thank you for your time.
Adrian Wickham. Good evening. Lee Scorez.
Oh, okay. Good evening. Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Manager, Members of Council and everybody else who's here. As you can see from what I've passed out here, this is about the Washington Ro- Ro- Cham- Chambou. Sorry for the pronunciation there, but Revolutionary Route. I'm not French. But let me tell you about this. I know three of the Members of Council were there on Saturday when they had a ceremony dedicating a historical marker at Deep Creek down at the end of Midfield Road next to the Midfield Marina. There were people there speaking French, including some from France. Who came from France. And what this is about, let me tell you, give you a shortcut here for those who won't have the sheet to look at. If you go on YouTube and search Washington, Ro- Ro- Cham- Bou- Deep Creek. Okay, I'll spell that for you. Washington and then R-O-C-H-A-M-B-E-A-U.
Rochambeau.
Rochambeau. Rochambeau. Yeah, I'll have to practice that. Rochambeau. Okay. And Deep, everybody knows Deep Creek. But if you go on YouTube, you can find that. And basically what it was about, the French fleet came over during the Revolutionary War and they were helping us at Yorktown. Now, in order for this to be successful, the army under Washington had come all the way, along with the French who were helping him, had to come all the way down from New England to Yorktown. And at the same time, the fleet was, the French fleet was blockading Yorktown to keep the British from leaving. Now, there was a storm. Now, some of the fleet, French fleet went up the James River to pick up some soldiers, French soldiers. But then there a storm developed and they had to go into Deep Creek. So that's the historical connection. The French were there at Deep Creek before they went over to join the rest of them at Yorktown. So, and to find out about this, like I said, and the other way you'll find this out, I will have something on our website soon. A link to all this and so just go to savereverviewfarmpark.com. and I will put a link in case you having trouble spelling that. But by the way, I want to put a plug in for Jay Michael Moore. He gave an excellent historical overview of all this and I have all that on video for you to watch. And if any Members of Council who were there would like to talk about it too, I encourage you to do it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Pam Hall.
Good evening, citizens of the Virginia Commonwealth. My name is Pam Hall and I'm here on behalf of Huntington Middle School. I would like to read some excerpts from Mary McLeod Thune's Last Will and Testament, written over 50 years ago. I leave you the challenge of developing confidence in one another. Economic disparitism cannot be tolerated in this enlightened age and it is not practical. I leave you a thirst for education. Knowledge is the prime need of the hour. We are making greater use of the privilege. If we continue this trend, we will be able to rear increasing numbers of strong, purposeful men and women equipped with vision, mental clarity, health and education. I leave you respect for the uses of power. We live in a world which respects power above all things. Power intelligently directed can lead to more freedom. Unwisely directed, it can be a dreadful destructive force. He must not lend his support to any group that seeks to subvert democracy. That is why we must select leaders who are wise, courageous and of great moral stature and ability. We must produce more qualified people like them who will work not for themselves but for others. I leave you faith. Faith is the first factor in a life devoted to service. Without faith, nothing is possible. With it, nothing is impossible. I leave you finally a responsibility to our young people. The world around us really belongs to youth for youth will take over its future management. Our children must never lose their zeal for building a better world. They must not be discouraged from aspiring together towards greatness for they are to be the leaders of tomorrow. We have a powerful potential in our youth and we must have the courage to change old ideas and practices so that we may do. I have a legacy to leave my people. It is my philosophy of living and serving.
Mr. Harrell.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is William Harrell, President and CEO of Hampton Roads Transit and I'll be very brief this evening. We certainly want to work very closely with the Members of Virginia Organizing. We've had some meetings with them. We agree wholeheartedly that there's room for change to improve public transportation. In fact, we're working very closely with your city. Lisa Cipriano is the Chair of our Financial and Management Committee and I assure you she holds our feet to the fire. We have worked very carefully.